This meeting will have to end at 6:45 PM in order to prepare for our special meeting following at 7:00 PM. Help yourselves to the pizza and please silence all your devices. Staff has compiled three references. The Community Workshop Summary starts on page five of the packet, the Survey Analysis Report starts on page 22, and the Public Engagement Analysis PowerPoint was on your chair. These are also available on the city website under Government, Planning and Zoning Commission Meetings, and there are more printed copies by the door. Would the staff please proceed with your presentation?
Yeah, thank you Chair Griswold. Thank you to all the members of the public who came up for this. This is fantastic. Early 2024 City Council tasked our office with facilitating the process of updating the city's comprehensive plan. If you're not familiar with the comprehensive plan, I'll just kind of be brief. It's essentially a visionary document that helps a town make decisions and plans for the future. Typically, they're 10-year plans. We currently have a plan that was drafted in 2017 and meant to run from 2020 to 2030. We're only halfway through that plan, but 2020, obviously COVID hit, some things kind of went off the rails pretty quick with the implementation of that plan. And while still, it's a useful document, it just needed some updating, and throughout the last year and a half, we're kind of just going for kind of a big overhaul. So today, we have a presentation that we're going to put up on the screen. It's a lot of great information. If you're watching on YouTube or if you catch this moment later, it might be easier to read that. Some of the stuff might be difficult for you in attendance to read, so you've got the presentation there with you as well. And so can we get the presentation up on the screen? All right. And so while our office was tasked with facilitating... Sorry, technical difficulties, not working. There you go. All right, user error. So our office was tasked with the implementation of the plan. It's really, we want the town to feel like the citizens are the ones who are drafting this plan, and so public input is very valuable. And so many of you may have seen the postcards we sent out last year. We attended several different community meetings. We had a survey, four surveys that were available for the public that were open for eight months last winter, and really good feedback, just under 1,200 responses across the four surveys. There were a total of 66 questions asked, and kind of at the end of that process, before it kind of got busy with the summer, we had three community workshops where we kind of took some initial data from the surveys and kind of asked some questions around them. And yeah, had really good turnout all across town for those. And we split up the surveys based on some research we did on other towns' comprehensive plans. They've kind of viewed their towns, looking at their town as a people, a place, and an economy. And so that's kind of we had three surveys targeted to those areas with an additional kind of overarching vision survey. And so as the Chair mentioned, we had two reports compiled to kind of summarize those, one for the survey analysis and one for the Town Hall feedback. And so those are in the packet for tonight. And this presentation basically kind of compiles the information from those reports. And so our goal for this evening is kind of twofold is, my name's Danny Munich, I'm the Director of Community Development, and on my right here is Courtney Bringhurst, she's the City Planner. And so I'm going to spend maybe half the time kind of just presenting that information to let you know what your fellow citizens are reporting about what they want to see in Seward, and then leave the rest of the time open for the commission and for you all as public to kind of voice your opinion. Because even though this is a city plan, like the city is not solely responsible for the implementation of the plan. So if you're representing a community organization, for example, if you need funding for different things, it's helpful to be able to pull things from a document like a city's comprehensive plan that are in there as justification for grants or different kinds of funding. And we've been kind of working with organizations, so we want to make sure that feedback is in there as well. And like I said, like the Chair said, we do have a time limit, and so if you're not able to get any feedback in tonight, feel free to make an appointment with our office, or there's on our website, there's a section for the comp plan that has an area that you can submit comments as well. And so I'll just kind of highlight a couple of things about who filled out the survey. And this slide really goes to show that this comprehensive plan is more than just an inside-city limits survey, like this is a community plan. So we wanted feedback from people who are both in and outside Seward city limits. Total population of that combined area is around 4,300, and so we saw about 8.8% of that population represented in the surveys. Inside-city limits, they won the total number game with about 1,200 more than outside-city limits, but the outside-city limit group had a higher percentage with 10.5% compared to just under 7% of the population who filled out. And then this next page just kind of outlines the age breakdown of the results. And I'll point out, on the very left, that's a 0- to 18-year-old range. We, we'll talk about it in our vision section, but we went to the middle school and high school and did a city planning activity with those groups, and kind of got feedback about their vision for Seward. And so they're included in this breakdown, but we didn't ask them the same questions that everyone else filled out with the survey. So they're not represented in the rest of the charts and graphs, but we do have a slide or two that kind of shows case, like their feedback, because we feel like they're the future of this town, and it was good to kind of reach out to them and kind of get their feedback. But yeah, that 40 to 49-year-old age range was the winners for the who filled out the most surveys. This next slide was households, number of households, and that second column there is two-person households. So we by far saw more people in two-person households fill out the survey. And so yeah, so it's a little bit overview. And so Courtney and I are going to kind of go back and forth based on the different surveys. And so I'm going to turn it over to her to talk about the vision of Seward.
All right. So at the beginning of each of the different surveys, we'll have a slide similar to this one where we list all of the questions, and we understand that this is bad PowerPoint etiquette, but they are not meant for you guys to read during this presentation. This PowerPoint will be put on Legislative History, and we wanted to make sure that for record-keeping and if anyone was going to look at the PowerPoint in the future, that they would know what exactly the questions were, because throughout the PowerPoint, we still list the questions, but we summarize them and don't use the exact language that was in the survey. So we wanted to make sure that that was kept there for record purposes. So the first question in the vision survey was what adjectives come to mind when you think of Seward? And in this word bubble, you'll see the largest words are the ones that were brought up the most often in the responses. The responses were just open-ended, and so we wrote down every single word that was, adjective that was used in those responses and created this word cloud here. And it's great to see that the majority of those words are positive. When people think of Seward, positive adjectives come to mind. The next question, ask the community about what community organizations and events make part of Seward's identity. This was also open-ended, and so we've listed the organizations and events that were, that came up in the survey, and then the number beside it is how often that event or organization was mentioned in the survey. And so interestingly, you'll notice that arts was mentioned quite often in this, in the survey, and that theme will actually kind of present itself throughout the other, the other surveys. And then, which of the following do you think positively contribute to Seward's existing identity? I just love that community friendliness is the first one up there, and you'll see this come up a lot too in a lot of the responses. And there again, the community events and festivals really make a part of what, what Seward is. Then we had a few questions asking people, what do you love about Seward and what would you love to see? And so once again, you see in what, what people love about Seward, you know, a sense of community, the friendly atmosphere, signature Seward events. And what would you love to see? More focus on local year-round residents. That's going to be a real common theme throughout all of the responses, as you'll see. So as Danny mentioned, we did go to the middle school to get their input. We realized that the surveys probably weren't going to be utilized by our middle schoolers and high schools, and so we took that initiative to go to them to get their input. And so we primarily got their input on the vision questions and the middle schoolers, what do they love about Seward? The natural beauty, that small-town feel, having good friends. So once again, iterating what many of the adults have said in their responses. And then what would we love to see? Stores and dirt bike trails were ones that were very popular among the, the middle schoolers. And while we were there with the middle school and the high school, you'll see later on, we did a fun planning exercise with them. So we gave them each a blank poster board, and we told them to design their ideal community. We wanted to see what different aspects, what key characteristics they would put into their community. So we just let them develop it for the first, first few minutes, however they wanted, and put in, you know, whatever type of developments they wanted. And then as the activity progressed, we gave them different scenarios. So we would say, you know, your city's become very popular, and you have lots of people moving to your city. You need to create more housing. Where are you going to put more housing? And so they had to figure out how to put more housing into their, into their city that they were developing. And then after a few more minutes, we would tell them, well now a factory wants to come in and do business in your city, but it's kind of controversial. So where are you going to put this factory where, you know, you're not going to destroy the identity of your town or make people mad? And so you'll see, you know, kind of up there, one group on the left put their factory in the far-left corner. And then we, in the final scenario, we told them, you know, tourism is now booming, your community's been noted as a popular place to go, or how are you going to accommodate tourists? And so they had to use these different challenges and scenarios and then create their community. And it's, it was interesting to note in a lot of their designs, even though we told them, you know, create whatever community you want, it doesn't have to look like Seward, a lot of them did include aspects like mountains and the ocean and other natural features. And so it's just brought out that this is an important aspect to our middle schoolers, just like it is to our, the adults who answered the surveys. So now this was the high schoolers' responses to some of those same questions about what do we love about Seward? The natural beauty, the small-town feel, friends, again, all came up. And then what would we love to see? The indoor recreation, and less about the tourists, more about the locals. So even the high schoolers are recognizing that need to focus on, focus on the year-round residents. And then these are the, a couple of the communities that the high schoolers created, and you'll notice in the far-left design, it is kind of hard to see, but the, the blue design in the far-left, there was meant to be a chasm separating the community from the factory. So they also felt strongly about separating those uses. Then in the workshop discussion, the surveys had already been out for a while, so we framed these questions for our workshop around the survey topics, but we, we framed them a little bit differently so that we could get more information, dig a little deeper. And so we asked, what would, what makes it challenging to live in Seward? And some of the key takeaways were, of course, limited access to resources and services, limited affordable housing, concerns about the school system, the high cost of living, and then concerns about seasonal tourism and the seasonal economy. We also asked during these workshops, what do you value most about living in Seward? And once again, those, those main themes, which when we see these key takeaways coming up over and over again, this, these are aspects then that are of course going to be highlighted strongly within our comprehensive plan of the values of Seward and the goals that the comprehensive plan will, will be built around these, these values that Seward has to maintain access to nature and outdoor amenities, and maintain that small, quiet, safe community, a strong sense of neighborliness and friendliness among residents. And then finally, what do you want Seward to look like 10 years from now? A strong education system, that vibrant year-round economy, affordable housing, maintain that small-town feel, and more local amenities.
So when you look at Seward as a people, we had a quality-of-life survey, and again, for record-keeping, those are all the questions, but we'll kind of go through them individually. And our first question was, do you see yourself living in Seward in five years? And if you've been here less than five years, kind of a two-to-one, yes, you see yourself here. And then as you kind of go through five to 10, 11 to 20 years, that, that ratio increases. The more and more people are viewing this as home and wanting to stay here. And then you see a kind of uptick in the no for that 21 to 40-year-old range. And I would guess that's your population that's recently or maybe approaching retirement and asking themselves, is Seward like the place for me in my later years? And so I think that's something we can pull from this data, and how can we focus on that demographic to make sure? Because once you've been here that long, you know, this is home. And so how do we make sure that that demographic feels Seward's a safe place for them to enjoy those years? And then 40-plus years, I think at that point, like you're just, you're just here. This is home. I'm not going anywhere. And so, yeah, some reasons why people would stay. It's that small, friendly community, a big theme in the survey. Good job, recreational opportunities is a theme in this data as well. But for the no group, you see that word "lack" a lot. And so lack of affordable housing, focus on year-round residents, resources, job opportunities, healthcare. And so I think that's really great data to look at, like how can we change that, those results. This was a fun one. What healthcare services would you like to see improved in Seward? So we had a bunch of humans fill out this survey, but by far and away, the number one answer is animal hospital. And so, so yeah, definitely a need for that. And yeah, we're not going to go through like all of the lists here, but the kind of the top ones, family health, eye, specialist care. And I think going through this list, there's kind of a split, because I think some represent need that we don't have, and some of these we actually do have. And so I think it's kind of twofold there. One are people saying that we need improvement in that area, or is it education to let people know that they exist? Maybe you don't know that acupuncture exists in town, or massage therapists, or PT, those kind of things. And so we can kind of delve into those two areas on the improvement and education side to let people know what's available to them here in town. We did ask some questions about kind of emergency services based on, the fire chief was kind of curious on this information, so we just kind of passed this on to him. But about two or three fourths of the community feel satisfied with the 911 services in town. And that one on the right, just how fast you expect someone to arrive when you call 911, which is kind of a good question for end-of-the-road rural Alaska. And so you do have everyone pretty much under 20 minutes there, but kind of a split there. That five to 10 range one is kind of the most. And then this, this question, these two questions were kind of interesting. Are you aware the ground-transport EMS services from Seward to Anchorage are not currently available? And 40% did not know that, and the city of Seward should provide ground-transport EMS services. And so I think there's an educational piece there about what, what does that look like? I did not sit still well during COVID years, and so I got a job as ER tech at the hospital here. And I can tell you, like, most people might know this, but if you don't, the hospital here is not meant to be like a long-term trauma care. It's more of a patch them up, and if it's really serious, we get you to Anchorage. And option one is a helicopter. If that doesn't work, we get a fixed-wing plane in here that SVAC will partner with and transport back and forth from the airport. But if that's not an option, which often isn't with our wind and weather, if you need to get to Anchorage, you're getting an ambulance from Anchorage to drive down to Seward, usually in winter, not great conditions, and then back to Anchorage. And so our job at the hospital was to kind of stabilize them, make sure that they're okay. And then that's like six hours you're waiting to get to better care. So just kind of interesting on, on that topic there. And so yeah, desired improvements to public health and safety, more paid physicians, better training, concern about illegal drugs, funding. Yeah. This next one, we kind of get into the school system here. And so what are the biggest challenges Seward schools are facing? And so the top three were inability to attract and keep qualified teachers, lack of funding, and decreased enrollment in public schools, which is an interesting one. It ties into that next question, which is, do you have school-aged children living at home? And so we have, yeah, 28 or 29% of our population has school-aged children. And then that split was, do they go to public school or are they homeschool? And if you do the math on that in Seward, based on people who filled out this survey, there's 28% of our families are homeschooling. And the national average is 3.5%. So that's a pretty big difference. And homeschooling is more ingrained to the culture of Alaska, but the state average is about 16%. And so there's kind of a big gap even there. And so there's two directions you can kind of analyze this data with. And going back to that decreased enrollment in public schools, there's probably a population that homeschools that, that would put their kids in the school if some of these issues they just felt weren't an issue. And so there's that direction, like how can we look to fix those things to increase enrollment so people feel more confident about attending the schools? And then the other avenue is, how are we making sure that we have resources for our families who are homeschooling and choosing to go that route? Because we do have a pretty big population that take advantage of that opportunity. And so, yeah, and this was more just open-ended. You can improve our public schools by just more funding. Housing is a common one for all industries, you know, getting teachers here. And then we've been hearing a lot about just higher-level classes, academic rigor, increasing size. All right, moving on to, how do people find out about events in our community? So the top four, the first one was word of mouth, and I want everyone to kind of remember that for a later slide here. Social media is next. So those are two very different ways. We have the old-school flyers posted in public spaces and emails from organizations. And so those were kind of by, by far and away, the most ways people find out about events in our community. And this next one was, how should Seward improve marketing? 41% of the people said a community newspaper. And so kind of a cool thing about this survey is, because this started a year ago, and so a lot of things actually have been implemented. If you weren't aware, we have the Seward Folly now. It's an online publication that's kind of filling that need. And so they're able to put out a lot of great information. Community calendar was in there as well. And then this next one was, Seward offers a variety of activities for, and again, it's hard to read, so it's probably better to read through your PowerPoint. But we have a lot of graphs like this moving forward, where the far-left is your agree, the far-right is your disagree, and that middle is just kind of neutral. And so kind of the way we looked at it is like you take away the neutral side, you're kind of looking, do you have a net positive or net negative with your agree versus disagree? And I'll kind of work my way bottom up by age groups. The community feels pretty good about activities for toddlers, even more so once you get into elementary school age. But then as you get into middle school and high school, you start to getting into more of that net negative group. College students, very low. Hard to tell what to do with that information, because I think we just don't have a lot of college students. And AVTEC has their own student activities coordinator, so I think there's just a lack of education maybe about what they do. But, but yeah, there's that. But then it jumps back up for adults. Feel like there's quite a bit, pretty good net positive with that ratio, even seniors as well for activities to do in town. What community events or activities do you wish were available in Seward? So again, the bigger words are the more commonly answered, movie theater, ice rink. We hear a lot about the ice rink or community center, winter activities, bowling alley, more performing arts, were highly written down here. And then this one, going back to that word of mouth, how do you prefer to receive notifications of city meetings? And so it's a little different than we asked earlier about just activities in general, but more people, most people are finding out about activities through word of mouth, but as their least version way that they'd like to receive information when it comes to like city meetings. That's kind of the last one there. And so like, how can we be better about these other ones? But the, the top four, I will say again, cool to see how some of these things have been implemented even in this last year. So emails, the city clerk's office started a subscription service. You can get emails about things you're interested in. So if you're not aware of that, definitely get signed up. Social media, the city has a Facebook page, so if you're on Facebook, they put events on there. We do have the newspaper with the Seward Folly. And then newsletters, the CAT, Solonson, the city manager, started a city newsletter. And it's a really great way to kind of look at upcoming city council meetings, and they're written in kind of layman's terms. You have a good understanding that we're actually starting to implement that as well for planning and zoning meetings. We'll start that with our November meeting. So kind of taking this feedback to heart. And then over on the right, your involvement in Seward govern, in city And so those are all the different responses there. So that might be something fun to pass on to the mural society uh, over there. This next one was what are Sewer strengths regarding parks and recreation opportunities? So again, hard to read, um, but if you're looking on your packet, I'll just highlight the first four, they all have one word in common and that is access. And so what we're hearing is uh, the Sewer residents uh, deeply appreciate their access to mountains, ocean, tidelands, beaches, regional open spaces. And so as we continue to develop as a community, how do we do that in a manner that, that keeps that access intact? I think will be a theme as well. And then on the right there, there are a variety of recreational activities for me to do in and it goes over summer indoors, winter indoors, summer outdoors and winter outdoors. And as you can imagine outdoors, there's a lot of net positive and then uh, winter indoors, pretty good net positive and even summer indoors, more people said agree than than disagree, although that was kind of a closer split. And I think that has a lot to do with the recent work over the last few years of the parks and rec, specifically the sports and rec department and what they're doing over in AVTEC because there are so many different new programs and leagues available for people to be involved with. Um, and these on the right were just the more open-ended questions about desired recreational events. Again, we see a lot with the kind of same thing as we had on that word bubble before. Um, and so yeah, when we did the workshops, the two questions we asked were what would improve your life in Sewer? And so the key takeaway is whether it's local amenities, a strong school system, clean and maintain city, local services, resources, and what do you wish for future generations growing up in Sewer? So again, strong school system, energy efficient homes and businesses and that year-round economy for future generations.
All right, so we'll move on to our land use survey, which focused primarily on the land uses within Sewer. So our first question was what natural hazards are of greatest concern to you within Sewer? In our current comprehensive plan, there's a whole section on natural hazards and, and various goals for preparing for or reducing the impacts from disasters. We wanted to make sure that we had a question in this survey to gauge, yeah, what are the community's primary concerns? And it's probably not surprising that the top uh, three there flooding, tsunamis, earthquakes, and then the fourth is landslides. And then we had a question, I would support additional restrictions in code in order to conserve. And so this was an important question as usually adding restrictions in code is not a popular topic, but Sewer does have a high amount of environment, environmentally significant and historically significant areas. And so we wanted to, to gauge and get feedback from the community on, on how important it was to the community to protect those, even if it meant through, through adding restrictions. And so as you'll see on the left there, the agree column for both of those environmentally significant in green and historically significant in orange were quite high that, that people do value those and want to protect and preserve those. And then in the comments on natural hazards and conservation, you'll see a couple there that refer to Sewer's need to be, be more prepared for natural hazards and the, this is something that each of us need to engage in, but on the, on the city side, um, I know the city manager's office and, and department heads have been a lot more involved and engaged in taking courses and developing a better um, incident command center that would be um, run by the city and in city hall if there ever were an incident. And so that is something that we're working on improving already. Then on this question, what public services or capital improvements would you support your tax dollars funding? I thought it was interesting, the, the top item there was to maintain the current city contract with AVTEC to use the gym facilities, not just highlight just how important recreation, having a place for the community to recreate indoors is for our community members. And then the second um, highest there was to fund a grant writer position that would seek funding for the items listed there below. And so that was an interesting takeaway there. Then these two questions were about um, food security as well as alternative energy. So just asking and gauging the community's interest and need for, to be more sustainable and, and reliant. And so for those of you who may not be aware, food security means ensuring that all people have reliable access to enough affordable and nutritious food. And so food, food security efforts may look like community gardens, farmers markets, food banks, meal delivery, supporting local food networks. And so once again, as, as Danny mentioned at the beginning, this implementing the comprehensive plan isn't just a, a city project or, or one organization, organization project, but all organizations and individuals within, within the community um, should, should take this plan on as their own once it is developed and, and try to implement it as best they can. And so this was great to see that 73% of the people who responded to this question did think that food security efforts were important. And then the second one there, Sewer should pursue alternative energy sources was also a, a high percentage of those who agreed. And alternative energy sources would, it would include solar, wind, hydro, geothermal, wave, tidal or nuclear. So all of those would be options for um, alternative energy. Then next we have considering Sewer's existing transportation networks, what are strengths for the community today? And the top two trails, obviously our surrounding area has wonderful, amazing trails. And then um, I found it just really remarkable and indicative of our community that walkability and is more, is high up there. Now, and walkability, you know, is based on a number of things. So like Sewer already has a lot of great aspects that make it walkable, like the streets and blocks in the community are short and buildings are close to the street and homes and amenities are, are close together. However, there is one aspect of a walkable community that we'll see that is not currently um, strong up there, which would be the condition of the sidewalks and having pedestrian and bicycle paths. And so that just kind of shows, you know, we, we already have a lot of aspects in our community that do make it very walkable. And so having goals now to improve those other aspects of the condition of sidewalks and maintaining them and plowing them and, and all of those things would be a good thing to have in our plan. Now for this particular question, what mode of transportation do you use the most to get around Sewer? Uh, respondents could actually select more than one. And so you'll see majority of people did select um, using a personal vehicle, but there were, were quite a high number, especially if added together, that chose that they use bike, scooter, skateboard and walking. And so um, this just shows once again, you know, that there are people in Sewer that enjoy and, and do like to choose walking and biking, scooter, alternative transportations in that sense. And so it, it is an important thing for us to consider that walkability aspect of our community and how we can improve that. And then this next question, Sewer should support the use of sustainable vehicles. This one was interesting where it was really split quite equally between those three of agree, neutral and disagree. And so we didn't have a follow-up question, so we get one that would be interesting to uh, ask you tonight or just to in general, as we go about to visit other communities or organizations within the communities would be to ask potentially why, why people responded this way, you know, to understand a little bit better why it was so split. Now what concerns do you have regarding parking in the city of Sewer? And this was a fun question also, you'll, you'll notice a few questions in the survey that actually have pertained to some of the topics in recent work sessions. And this survey, this survey was created a year ago and so well before these topics came up, but um, has these, these questions have been useful in our conversations this year. And when considering concerns with parking, it's as with most questions, there's going to be a variety of perspectives. And so, you know, when you're looking at the public's perspective of parking, you know, their main, their main concern may be just looking at convenience or access. You know, people want parking where it's free and where it's easy to find and, and close to their, their destination. So that's what they're, you know, the general public is thinking when they consider parking and they're focusing more on their day-to-day comfort and ease and, and don't always take into account, you know, how much space or money the parking may consume. And then if you, if you have a developer answering this question, they're going to have different concerns, you know, they're, they're going to be considering um, you know, the cost and feasibility of a project and as it pertains to parking, because parking is expensive to build and can limit the, their project size or feasibility. And so they're going to be focusing on, well, you know, how can I meet the code requirements and the market demand, but still minimize my cost? And then you have the planning perspective, you know, that the commission and, and my office would uh, would take on, on, and when we're gauging parking concerns, where we're looking at, you know, the, the community impact and balance and, and viewing, you know, that parking is part of the larger system that affects the walkability and transit and the land use. And so um, you know, trying to look and gauge all of these concerns of how can we balance accessibility for all modes, you know, walking, biking, transit, driving, while not being careful to not overbuild any one form of infrastructure to dominate and push out the others. And so you'll notice that on this, on this question, a majority of the, the respondents said they have no concerns, but um, you have to understand as well that all of the other bars beneath it are concerns. So even though the first one says there are no concerns, a majority of people do have some concern in some form or another, whether it's lack of parking or whether it's underutilized parking lots that could be developed or too much parking. And so once again, we, we get in a situation where um, as a commission in our planning office, we have to kind of find that balance that the community um, should have. And then this question, I would support more regulated parking such as meters or limited hours in congested areas. And not surprisingly, a majority of people said no, they would not support regulated parking. And uh, in our conversations during work sessions, work sessions and other um, public engagement, what we've heard from the public is that while their first response is initially to be resistant, you know, I don't want regulated parking, we have, we have found that more people are open to discuss the, the option of regulated parking if, if their local needs are taken into account, such as if locals were given discounts for regulated parkings or a free pass or, or something along those lines. And so um, you'll kind of notice that in those comments um, listed there too, you know, that the year-round residents should be, should be taken care of in this, if, if regulated parking is considered. Then we had some open-ended questions about the most dangerous location in Sewer for vehicles and pedestrians. And we just found it interesting that there's quite a few intersections listed there. Port Avenue, Sewer Highway intersection, downtown intersections, Washington railway, Fifth Avenue intersection. And then the general transportation questions, you see again that need to improve snow and ice removal on sidewalks and paths and the better maintenance of roads. And then this question asks if there were safe sidewalks or trails, um, would you choose to use other forms of transportation other than a vehicle? And this was quite surprising and, and interesting as well to see that a majority of people who answered this question would choose alternative transportation, 61% would. And then for those who said no, the reasons why they would not use other forms of transportation, a lot of those reasons that they listed are, you know, personal preferences and also factors that can't necessarily be changed, like the weather or living outside of, of town. Um, they enjoy driving, but you'll see once again that roads and sidewalks are not maintained. And so it's just interesting to think, you know, what, what percent of those, the 26 and 13% that said they're either neutral or, or would not choose another form of transportation other than their vehicle, if we had well-maintained sidewalks, um, where they didn't have gravel in the spring or potholes, cracks in snow, how many more people would choose to um, use bikes or walk and, and get, to get around Sewer? So this question asks if current code is effective in regulating appropriate land uses in Sewer? And you'll see that majority of respondents did say that they disagreed, that code is not effective. And then you'll see listed on the right, the reasons why they, they did not think code was effective. And then we asked, you know, why has uh, city code perhaps inhibited you from developing on your property? And if it has inhibited you, so we knew that we, we had respondents from inside city limits as well as outside city limits, so we did ask whether or not you own property inside city limits. And so actually a majority of people that responded to this question don't, didn't even own property within city limits and so not affected by the city code. But um, still 30, 38 have been inhibited or feel like city code has, has inhibited them on their development.
Courtney, I just wanted to highlight the, and why city code inhibits me that the parking requirements are too high, this noted there. And it talks to your point that you made earlier.
Yeah. Thank you. Now this is uh, another question that was created before. Um, many of you know that the, the building height has been recently changed, but this question asks what height of building should Sewer allow? Um, one to two stories, three stories, four to five stories? Um, and so Sewer has already, has always allowed three-story buildings and the, the height, the current height change, um, if anyone doesn't know, uh, Sewer previously had a height limit of 34 feet and it's been recently changed to 38 feet. And part of the reason for this is that building code has changed over the years, making it difficult for a three-story building to be constructed within 34 feet. Building materials have gotten larger, requirements have gotten more uh, strict and require more things within buildings. And so in an effort to support developers and to maintain that three-story building height that um, the majority of the community does, does support, the building height was raised to 38 feet, which only allows a, a three-story building at that height. I went the wrong way. And we had a question of what barriers are there to developing land in Sewer? And I just want to point out a couple in there that, that are barriers that we can't really change and, and a lot of these, we're going to have to try and find creative solutions to already, but, but issues like lack of land or challenging terrain, those are, are just ones that, you know, we, we can't change and, and may have to get creative with in the future. Then typically you'll see throughout the, our PowerPoint, but when we have open-ended questions, there, we provide the responses in a bubble. But this question is in bar graph form, although it was open-ended in, within the survey. And so we took those open-ended responses that people um, wrote down for what type of development they would oppose in Sewer regardless of location. And we tallied up how many people um, put down certain, um, certain types of development. And so the categories you see listed here were ones that emerged from the open-ended responses and. So then we had a question about whether you own your own home in Sewer? And this was an interesting result as 80% of the respondents said that yes, they do own their own home. So nationwide, 65% of the population owns their own home. And in Alaska, 66% own their own home, so pretty similar. And then in Sewer, from the, from the 20, 20 census, 69% of the population actually owns their own home. So this number of 80% is a lot higher than what the true percentage is. And, and part of the reason for this, if you'll remember back to the age of the respondents, 70% of the people who took this survey were 40 years old or older. And so typically at this age, you probably do own your own home or are able to own your own home. But it also kind of shows that individuals who own their homes are more invested and interested in their community and the, and the, the future of their community. And so it kind of shows, you know, the, the more we can um, get people to buy homes and live and stay in Sewer, then the more, the more they'll be invested in our community. And then this other question, if you own a home in Sewer, do you rent it out? And we had to also put in there to specify if you don't own property in Sewer city limits. And so you'll see a majority of people who own a home in Sewer, the answer was no, that they don't rent it out either long-term or short, short-term. they don't rent it out, either long-term or short-term. And then these questions we asked, the greatest barriers for purchasing a home in Seward, as well as the greatest barriers to being able to rent a home. And of course, price of homes, lack of homes or affordable rentals were top on those barriers. And then we had an open-ended question of things that are negatively impacting neighborhoods today. So you'll see a list there, a lot of, you know, just the general upkeep of homes and yards and properties came up, lack of sidewalks and bike paths, traffic congestion, cost of living, a whole list there. And then we asked, what are the strengths of residential neighborhoods in Seward? And once again, you'll see the reoccurring themes of pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods and neighborhood friendliness, that friendliness of Seward and that community feel were top on that list of strengths for the residential neighborhoods. Now during our workshop discussion, we had a land use table. So many of you who took part may recognize the picture here of the future land use map. And for those who didn't take part in the workshop, they'll explain what all the dots and sticky notes are. So each person was given four different colored dots. A green dot, which would represent parks and open space, a yellow dot that would represent residential, blue dot to represent industrial uses, and then a red dot to represent commercial uses. And they were instructed to place their dots where they felt these types of uses would be most appropriate. And so you can see probably better in your packet than on the screen, but that there are a lot of green dots. And so it's indicative that for Seward residents, parks, open space, the recreation aspects are very important, an important use for Seward.
And then our last survey was the economic development survey. So the questions are listed there, but we'll jump right into it. We were just kind of curious on who owned their own business, and we had 23% of the survey respondents owned their own business. And so kind of take that for what's worth for the rest of the comments moving forward. One of the questions we did ask was what are the greatest barriers for seasonal businesses? And lack of employee housing was number one on that list. And from our office's standpoint, we've seen over the last several years, a lot of different employee housing or bunk houses that come before the commission to get a permit to build that. And so we're in a situation where the employers are having to take the onus on themselves to come provide that housing if they're going to want to be in the seasonal game. The next one was what are the greatest barriers for year-round businesses? And so lack of clientele, lack of employees, cost of utilities, kind of split among these. Housing was higher. That's an interesting one, too, because housing is obviously more available in the winter, but obviously there's the aspect of getting potentially kicked out in April and not wanting to have to deal with the stress of that is a big factor from, you know, conversations that we've had. What businesses or services does Seward lack? So another word bubble that we have, just open-ended. So hardware store, lumberyard, restaurant was added, so I'm assuming I mean just more options, vet clinic, healthcare, movie theater. Some of those were the bigger ones that were listed here. And then this next one is lack of childcare in Seward a barrier to your employment or business? And so I want to delve into this one because 71% said no. So that might seem, oh, it's not a big deal. But I think if you look back, if you remember back from one of the first slides, we asked that question of do you have school-aged children? It was the same split, 71, no, 29%, yes. And that doesn't necessarily take into account people who have kids who are under school age, but if you kind of compare those data points, you can make a pretty good educated guess that the majority of the people who say no are the families that don't have kids and the ones that had, do you have kids? They're pretty much all saying that it is a barrier. And so, and yeah, you can see that on the top, first comment, we got that a lot, is childcare is not an issue for me because I don't have children. And so that's reflected in that 79%, but most of that 29% are having issues. And these are the issues, it's just cost of living requires both parents to work, can't work without childcare. And yeah, so a big thing that we can kind of pull for the next plan as well is how do we improve that situation in Seward? This one was what is your preference for growth? So this was kind of an interesting thing to hear. The orange is the population, the light blue in the middle is winter economic growth, and then the dark green is the summer economic growth. And you start at the top with significant growth to reduced growth. So when it comes to population, still kind of an appetite for growth, you still have a large number saying no growth, but not much in that reduced aspect. The whole aspect of winter tourism or year-round economy here is really indicative here with the light blue graph, that there's very, an appetite for significant growth when it comes to winter economic growth. And so how do we tap into that as a town? And a pretty big split in the survey, and you'll see later in the town hall meetings, with summer economic growth between, yeah, growth and no growth, keeping where we're at versus reduced growth. And so that's a conversation that the town's going to continue to have moving forward. Regardless of how the economic development works, kind of relating to a slide, Courtney talked about economic development should be balanced with the need to protect our environmental resources. So four out of five people said agree to that one. And it goes back to, again, that important theme of aspect to the resources, the natural resources that this town values. And just curious of, in terms of who works in the tourism industry, about a third of the respondents who took this survey work in the tourism industry. And that one on the right was asking, how does tourism positively impact Seward? And so you've got the generation of income through taxes on the top and the bottom, which is creating business and employment opportunities. And then the flip side of that is there a negative impact to Seward? And so kind of split among here, the three top ones were long lines at stores and restaurants during the busy season, increased traffic, and then increases the cost of living here in town. And then, and then I'm going to skip outside for a second and then go over to the workshop discussions. This one was indicating your appetite for growth in these economic development drivers. And so it's kind of hard to see, but the categories were commercial fishing, education, and workforce development, small business, healthcare, and tourism. And so if you see a green, that's like your significant growth. Yellow is moderate, orange is minimal, that red is no growth, and the blue is smaller. And so for commercial fishing, there's an appetite for growth, education and workforce development, big appetite, small businesses, the same, healthcare, the same. And you can see with tourism, again, a pretty big split there between the growth and no growth. Less people in the workshops indicated a reduced growth, but it still kind of shows a pretty big split with the community in terms of that aspect. And then this one, this next one was share your perspective on what Seward offers in these economic development supporters. So red was, there's too little of this, orange is too much, and green is just about right. And there's hardly any orange on that. Housing's an interesting one, 54 people responded and 53 said there's too little. In our planning zoning work sessions, we've been talking about the middle missing housing issue, which is kind of a nationwide issue. Because if you go online, you can find plenty of empty lots or single-family homes for half a million or more, but it's, you know, those duplexes, triplexes, you know, if we're going to hire a teacher, we don't have a school in here that's popping out people with education degrees. So where are they going to live? They're going to want to live somewhere like an apartment complex for a year or two before they decide if they're going to invest. They're not going to buy an empty lot in development and be able to live here. So same with nurses and these other aspects of a year-round community, that's going to be a balance because there's oftentimes, you know, concerns if you're going to increase density, but there's a tie-in with increasing density if we want year-round economies to continue to thrive or to find ways for them to thrive here in town. Transportation was that next one, food security, recreation, yeah, public safety, renewable energy, a lot of appetite for more of that, childcare. No one said we have too much or just about right. So some really good things we can pull out of the workshops for that one. And then just an open question of what ideas do you have? Affordable electricity, more recreational winter activities, and local economic development opportunities. And I'll go back to this, oops, last slide of the survey results. One of the last questions we had is kind of what I view as the framework of the comprehensive plan is how can Seward balance the development of a vibrant year-round community while still supporting the seasonal business economy? We have a national park here, like that aspect's not going away. We can have conversations about what that development looks like for the future, but what does that balance look like to make sure that we have a year-round community that can benefit from the economic windfall of what happens in the summer while maintaining a great community for those of us who do live here year-round? And yeah, I'll turn it over to Courtney for one last slide.
So comprehensive plan isn't formulated with just information from, say, survey or those workshop, community workshop meetings that we had. It requires research and information gathering from a lot of different areas. And you'll see on this last slide, in your packet there, numerous bubbles with different pieces that we use to inform the comprehensive plan. So the process for updating a comprehensive plan starts by reviewing the current plan and then studying key topics like housing, transportation, land use, and the local economy. And then we look at population and economic data to understand how the community is changing and then what we'll need to do in years ahead to address these changes. And then we have the community workshops that we did, the surveys, and then focus group interviews, as well as outreach to local organizations, which many of you might be part of local organizations that we've already reached out to, and we plan on coming back to you to get more specific feedback on what your organization would like to see in the plan. But these variety of workshop surveys and reaching out give residents the chance to share their ideas and priorities and ensures that a wide range of voices are heard, which is also one reason why we went to the schools, we intentionally wanted to get that, to hear the voice of our younger community members. But all of this input helps to formulate the values and goals for our community and then guides the final draft of the comprehensive plan. So you'll see in the bubbles, we kind of had some dates there of when these different pieces would be conducted. And we're in the fall/winter phase now of community outreach and interviews, which will likely probably bleed a little bit into the early winter of 2026, and then we hope to start drafting the actual comprehensive plan in the spring of 2026. And once we start drafting, there'll still be continued opportunities to engage with the community, to get your review of the draft plan and input on the goals that will be in the plan. So we don't have a date set yet for when the final plan will be ready, but we hope that it won't take too long once we get into the drafting stage.
Yeah, that's our presentation. I know we're limited on time, so I'll turn it back over to the chair for...
Thank you very much for an excellent job. So, commission, we have about 24 people in the audience, and would you mind extending it to like five minutes to seven? That'd be all right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So who would like to speak first? I'm wondering too, Jamie, could you take the microphone to the audience so they don't have to waste time maneuvering through chairs and stuff? And then you can start with Casey and then it can just be passed around. Maybe that'll speed up. So keep it short and to the point if you can, so that everyone has a chance to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Casey, we're inside city limits. Just to set the stage, I'm here as a private citizen. I just want to acknowledge the great work that community development has done on this plan. I think it's really important that childcare did show up in here. When we build a house, we need to set our foundation, and foundation of growing a year-round population in Seward is going to be childcare. The way to build a strong school system is getting those families to stay here in our community, and they're going to do that if they've already started off growing their family and having the support of childcare to be able to work in our community, grow their family, they're going to then fumble into our school system. So I'm really excited to see that childcare was noted in here and it is an economic development activity and looking forward to seeing how that develops.
Thank you. Next, your name and in and out of city limits?
Hi, my name is Lily Coyle. I currently rent slash house sit shuffle in city limits, but I'm building out of city limits, so hopefully that game will end soon. I am here on behalf of the Seward Arts Council. And we, so thank you, Danny, for just making us aware of the surveys. I think a couple of our members did participate in them, but we are very much aware of the importance of continuing to provide arts and cultural events and activities for Seward and Miss Pass residents. I think the results in the survey highlight something that I have been trying to advocate for, for a couple of years now, that investment in the arts is an economic investment. It is very important, the arts can provide a sustained year-round economy that is, you know, not dependent on weather, it's not dependent on cruise ships, there's plenty of Alaskans, like in Anchorage, just looking to come down for the weekend, it would provide, you know, a lot more opportunity for businesses to remain open year-round if there were more ongoing activities that was drawing people in. Everything pretty much right now that the Arts Council is putting on is produced through volunteerism, which I think is a testament to how dedicated people in Seward are to the arts and artistic events. Many of us are working, you know, multiple jobs and still just coming in on weekends and late at night to help, you know, produce things for the community. And I just think continuing to shift our mindset to understand that an investment in the arts is an investment in our economy and our sustained year-round residence is pretty important. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Who's next?
My name's Mary Lynn, but I live inside city limits. And I'm here in different forms, one with the Seward Folly, but also I'm a resident in ski club at this point. And I gotta just tag on to Lily. It's just really hard right now with a lot of volunteerism. It just is a decline and we have such a small population. And I just keep seeing winter recreation come up over and over and over again, but without support beyond volunteerism, it just becomes a super hard thing to do. So I'd like to, you know, see more investment in that also.
Who's next? Don't be shy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melanie Smith. I live outside of city limits and have been here since 2012. I'm a social worker and I provide services to young families. And I just wanted to share, one, this is wonderful to see and to hear the results. So thank you for putting that together and going through just all of the ideas and opinions and the things that are important in our community. And I just wanted to share just how important it is to continue having services that support young families. Yeah, I do like play groups at the library and I know that the program I work with serves everybody, which is wonderful. So it's, you know, it doesn't matter how much you make or what you do, and everyone's welcome. And as we all know, like, it's important having families to continue living in Seward. I know many people have lived here for a long time, longer than I have, and love it here. And I think it's just important to continue having positive things, you know, such as like the Sea Life Center, they have activities, we have the new children's museum, supporting Abtec and all of their activities for children and adults. And I think just anything, any other things that we can support in the zoning work for, you know, additional spaces for families to recreate or individuals as well to get together. And then I'd like to second as well, just the importance of childcare in our community. Oftentimes, I'll have young families come when their children are, say, they have a newborn or when they're young, and they're looking, they are, you know, many people need to work. Some families are able to switch off, you know, it's like maybe... Some families are able to switch off, you know, it's like, maybe the mom is home with the kids, in the summer, well dad's fishing, or dad is, you know, working at the prison, or just, you know, all different, or like fishing, all the different, or, you know, charters, all the things that, private businesses that people have here in Seward. And then, you know, I have dads that bring the kids, or nieeys, grandparents, but yeah, I've seen that need, and I've seen people actually move because they can't find childcare. One can be for like, like young babies, there's more of a limit. We are having a positive increase, you know, through funding to get like more preschools, like Turner Learning Center opened recently, another preschool, which is wonderful, and they serve, I think it's like three, age three up to age 12. But so, for the younger ones, I think that's really important, as well as for like, maybe single parents that need that childcare, don't have support, I mean, their family here, or they're, you know, we're trans, we have people that come in, Abtec students, or we have people that come here for work. But I've also seen people move because they can't find housing. I think that's super important, is having, and yeah, as we all know, it's just an issue here, having enough like stable housing. There was a family that wanted to like to stay here, husband had a job, mom was staying home and working part-time, but they couldn't, they were in seasonal housing, and then they had to leave when the summer hit. So I think that's, yeah, the more that we can increase housing as well is super important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Lamstrom, outside City Limits. There's a lot of great topics and a lot of great comments in this, and again, just thank you. I'll stop there with that. There are things the city can control and things that the city can't control that are, I think, potential outcomes from here, and I just hope that the outcomes, potential outcomes that the city can't control don't get forgotten. I know the city can only do what the city can do, but let's not forget the other ones. That's about all I can really formulate right now, because there was so much to try to comprehend in here.
I'm Mark Swanson, I live outside of City Limits. Yeah, this is great, this plan, well done. There's something that doesn't cover is with the cruise ship traffic that's going to increase exponentially, it's going to put a pressure on some of our infrastructures, that this doesn't talk about something particularly like traffic, and traffic that people control. Also, internet and cell phones. Right now, the cell phones, when the cruise ships are in, they crash, and this is something that's gonna have to be part of the planning ahead, is how to manage the increased traffic.
Yeah, thank you for this. It's, one of the things that jumped out at me is there's just so much emphasis on our place and the nature around this, and I recall, there was a happiness survey, and I don't have all the details, but my, what I got from hearing about the happiness survey was that so many people in this community use these natural resources to like beat those winter doldrums, recover from depression, like, it's therapeutic, it's not just, we live in a beautiful place, but our community is using that as a way to get through hard times, and I think we need to remember that, and I hope we can find ways to make those easier to use, and it's gonna take a community, not just something the city in planning zoning does. And then also, education is just huge on there, and I know we, there's a group of us that started Seward Education Advocates, because there's just, there's been a lot of issues with state and local funding for our schools, and our schools are unique in that we are small, but we're not tiny, but we're not like Kinnai and Homer and Svalatna, so we're always gonna struggle to some degree. So one of the things we're trying to do is find ways to support our schools, bring some of these, the things that our community, like values, like arts and music and culture, find ways to bring those things into our schools and work with our business community, find pathways to bring resources and opportunities for our schools as a community and not just rely on the borough and the state to do all of it, but that we as a community have a responsibility to get into those schools and get involved and do what we can to provide opportunities for our kids.
Micah, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm Micah Vanbuskirk, and I live inside City Limits.
And do you have, do you have a link to your group, your Seward advocacy group?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Anybody who is a website designer, we'd love some help with that. Yeah, we have an email, and I could chat with you maybe to share help.
Okay. Of course, the folly will pick it up if you wanna give it to them.
Yeah, there's information in the folly about us. We've been working with them to get the information out. And always, our schools are right up the road, and we have awesome administrators, and we're always welcoming.
Thank you very much.
My name is Nicole Lawrence, and I live outside City Limits, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Community Development Department for putting all the work into this. There were a lot of great get-togethers at the school, I was involved in one of those, and so many people there who care about our community, so I wouldn't have a specific plug for anything, but I just think it's really great that we get to have these conversations, and I really admire and appreciate the work that you guys put into it, so thank you.
Anybody in the hallway?
My name's Bob Barnwell, and I'm inside City Limits. A couple of things. One, a big shout-out to the planning department here, the community development, and planning zoning. The thing that people need to realize is that you guys are doing this pretty much in-house. If you look at Homer, I think Homer spent somewhere in the order of $600,000 or $700,000 on having a firm from Anchorage do their plan. So it's really cool, these guys are doing so much here, and it's organic, and we're part of this, so again, another shout-out to you guys. The other thing I wanted to say is that there are quite a few people that were involved in education throughout their lives here, or still are deeply involved, and I know the city can't do a lot for that and not work on this plan necessarily, but I just wanted to just make sure people realize that so much of what's going on with our education right now is a lack of funding, and we as citizens need to realize that and support or lobby the state to get adequate funding for public education. Public education in these small towns are crucial, we all know that, speaking to the choir. I'm not sure everybody in the urban areas know that, and we just have to keep lobbying and make sure that these schools are supported and feel valued. All right, thanks.
Maya Moriarty, I live outside City Limits. Thank you for this. A while ago, one of the projects that came out of a comprehensive plan was the library, so I think in each one of the surveys that you did was a community health, or a community center. So I don't know if that's something that you're looking at, if at the very end, that there was a project that the community wanted to work on, and I'm not volunteering my services to read that, but it was some, you know, the library was something that came out of that plan. The other thing I've mentioned before, I don't know if there is a partnership or seed money with the Chamber of Commerce, but there are other chambers in various states that also have an economic development piece, where they have seed money to try and bring businesses into their communities that are lacking. So we've already been losing businesses, and then there's already been businesses that have been identified, like the movie theater, or bowling alley auto repair, which we lost, where the chamber, if they had seed money, maybe from the city or the borough, could try and bring these businesses in and also offer tax incentives, et cetera, and you've already mentioned that in your plan. And lastly, Safeway and the other pharmacies are probably aware of this, but when the tourists come into our city and the cruise ships, one thing that is hard is prescriptions. So it's ridiculous to try and wait two weeks to get your prescriptions filled, and I know that's not within your control, but it's something, if you're reaching out for partnerships and collaboration, they could be aware of that. I think that's it.
Tina Sitrat, I'm actually brand-new to the community, I just moved here in May, and as an educator for 28 years, one of the things that I would piggyback on is when you're looking at trying to work within the regulations that are being placed upon you with the Kinnai Kings of School Board, one of the things that they do when they decide how many teachers they can allocate to a building is they have a specific formula, but the formula isn't looking for us because we're too small. So one of the things that we also need to advocate for is not only that we are within the formula, but that we have a minimum number of teachers that are there to get those high school graduation requirements for the students, because the formula is not equivalent to the minimum number of teachers. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done at this level, or if it's more research that needs to be taken, look at, but just to make sure that the students are able to get their minimum requirements, and that is going to be higher than what the borough deems as far as the numbers. So if there's some possible way to get as much information as possible, so that when we are presenting that idea as it's moved forward, we're making sure that we are kept important and not just the number.
I'd like to mention that Micah is our newly-elected school board representative for our district, so she's...
And that is my number-one priority on the school board, and her is adjusting the staffing formula, that is absolutely horribly inefficient for working for Seward. So I totally agree. It's interesting that you would come to town as a new person, and I'd just...
Pick that up.
Right off the bat. So, because that is our key issue with our school.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tara Anderson. I used to be at Abtec as the main website person. I was kind of a victim of a lot of the layoffs and, for tech, as well as, there's like been a large amount of people from Abtec who have left and they're not able to have their jobs available for anyone to put up, because of the hiring freeze right now, which kind of relates to the amount of young professionals, young and middle-aged professionals that I've seen leave Seward, because there's not a lot of opportunities to get housing or childcare if you do want to have a family. Even if you didn't even have family, it's definitely frustrating not being able to get housing that you want, even, especially, especially if you had to have large commutes. I had friends who, I would try to do like art walks with them, and they would like, some weeks they would be like, "No, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to drive into town to do the art walk." And, yeah, I was really happy when they were able to do that, and they had the energy to do that, which, you know, goes to the whole helping out the art community, you know, which, which relating to that is, I love how walkable the city is. It's something I love about the summers, the fall, the springs. I've been enjoying going out with my, I finally got my electric scooter working, and I've been enjoying going, being able to have these nice days. But I also minded that during the winters, you know, it's hard to do a lot of winter recreation, because it takes forever to get, for instance, the walkways and bike paths cleared out, they're like the least priority. I mean, I can understand it, you know, people need to drive to get places to work, but it can be a whole week or more before the sidewalks get cleared out, so it's like, even if you get a fat tire bike, it's kind of not easy, especially if it's icy, too, which kind of relates to the, there's like a ton of winter opportunities for youth to be able to get those opportunities to get together with other youth, too, for mental health, as well as for, you know, staying active and gathering during the winter, but most of the winter opportunities for adults are, you know, the occasional arts activity, I loved any of the poetry or the, any of the arts gatherings that the arts community been able to put out, as well as, and I've, you know, and I've been loving, it's been increasing over the years, as well as, you know, the amount of things that Abtec offers at the recreation center, but it's still low, you could be definitely hired. Anyway, I've kind of gone for a while.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Becky Dunn, inside the City Limits. I have been in the hallway for a little bit, I just got off work at six, but I was listening, and where's she at? Maya spoke about the prescriptions, and I can testify to that. Safeway's been running out of insulin, somebody pedaled in on his bicycle, 16-year-old, saying "Thank you for being on PACAB, and thank you for mentioning that you were worried about our infrastructure when the cruise ships get doubled," and "Safeway's out of my insulin right now, and I'm really concerned," and I later heard a tone out to his house with the 16-year-old having seizures. So I would like to see, if you Google tourism best practices, Juno and Whittier have implemented this, and I think that Seward needs to, and Maya, there you go, you could be on that board. And, but I really think that there needs to be some guidelines there or something. I got a call from somebody, they said, "You need to get down here, here's some pictures, there's somebody with four shopping carts of eggs," and they were off a cruise ship, they decided to have an omelet, a giant omelet or something, but, so they came in with a few people and picked out all the eggs that were damaged and sent them back in there and took four shopping carts out. So I talked to the manager, and he did say that he's going to make sure nothing like that happens again. So if you see something, say something to the appropriate people. I didn't spout off on Facebook about it, and the story, didn't do the pictures, I just went and talked to him, and he said they're aware of that and apologized, and I said, "We need to go check out what mess there is right now, because it's just a bunch of broken eggs." So he said, "I'm on my way over there now." And my mom has to go to fill a prescription for times, she is definitely not savvy enough to do it on the internet, doesn't have internet, doesn't have an email, is not going to. So she is one of the, one of the people that really benefit from our TV service with KIBH 91.7, so it's public radio. We provide a free TV service. If anybody is interested in it, let me know later on, there's no monthly fee, you do have to have an antenna, and people are just finding out that it's us doing it, we need to do better about promoting it and letting people know. Somebody came in from Little Point and said that he has rabbit ear antennas, and all of a sudden he has free TV, and I didn't know that from you guys, and brought us a bunch of, he wasn't the Girl Scout cookies, that was somebody else, but brought us some cheese. So that's a good service, and it has PBS, the local news, you know, things that people want that don't have internet, or, and soon we'll have our own station, well, not soon, we'll see if any of those cut, but, and then we'll be like the GCI used to do, where they aired the council meetings and all the meetings, and we can air sports events, or have our own channel, so that'll be on TV from the high school. And the, this is really cool, they talked about winter and activities, the...
Becky, you need to wrap it up?
Okay.
We're at our limit.
The Sea Life Center is doing a senior walk now, and it is like from 1:00 to 2:00, and I forget the dates, and it'll start in November, so that's really cool. All right, thank you.
Okay. I'm really sorry, but we're limited on time, we have to stop at this point?
Yeah. I decided to let know I'm City Limits, and it took me four years to get my house, to be there.
Okay, thank you. If you would put the microphone back in the middle table? I want to thank everyone for coming. This is a great turnout, and I'm sorry that our work session is so short, but we'll probably have more opportunities for the public to participate, and I encourage you to sign up for the email subscription list, so you can get on that and be well informed. And at this time, I am going to adjourn the work session, we'll be starting our special meeting at 7:00.